Okay, peace everyone. Who you got in the building? Have you got people here? You've got Carl, you've got Sandra.
Yes, King.
We've got Charlene, we've got Gladys. Other one then? Anybody here? Anybody actually here?
Blessed, blessed or blessed or good man?
Yeah, yeah. Lovely. Hey Sandra.
Hi mate.
Hi. Hi, hi, brilliant. How's your week been?
Not too bad, not too bad, good, yeah.
Lovely, 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 lovely. Thanks for coming through guys. I think we're just gonna dive straight in today, you know? I was, um, I was gonna see if maybe we could give it like five minutes for a couple more people, but that's not really how we do Sunday.
No, please start up one.
Yeah, exactly. We'll just get started and then people who come through can come and catch up. Um, so, yeah, I'm actually at a friend's, you can see, upper hotel. Um, because my friends come down to London from Wales, so I'll come through and say hi. Um, but of course, Sunday study sessions must go on, you know what I mean? It's good to be here, it's good to be here with you guys. Um, it's really important that, you know, to me, that I stay disciplined, that we stay disciplined. Um, so, you know, obviously, because that is a part of the process and the more disciplined we can stay, um, the more successful we'll be in this space. That's basically the way it works, you know what I mean? So every single Sunday, we do the Sunday study sessions. Um, who's here for the first time? Have you got any first timers? Anyone? I'm seeing, uh, um, Sophia T Momo. I haven't seen you before. I'm seeing Gladys. Gladys, I think I've seen you before actually. You got any first timers?
I'm always, I'm not your first, I'm always here, just quiet.
Okay, okay, always here just quiet.
Yeah, Sophia, yeah.
Good to have you back. Okay, alright, so you haven't got many first timers today, no worries. Okay, cool. Um, today, what I wanna discuss is patience actually. I wanted to do a bit of a mindset, um, conversation today. Um, and I thought that the subject could be on the subject of patience. Um, I'm presuming then the most of you guys were here for the candlestick study session. Yeah, is anyone quite cool?
You keep breaking up.
Oh, do I?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, hold on. Alright, give me a second.
Everything good? I swear there's just pure silence right now.
We can hear you.
I was trying to connect, I was trying to connect to the wifi because you guys said I was breaking up, so I thought let me just try and connect to the wifi here. But, um, it's not connecting, so I'm just gonna stick with what I've got. Yeah, I'm just gonna stick with what I've got. Let me know if it starts breaking up again. Um, because I know how to connect now, but it's not connecting. But always, my guy is heading out, so maybe once he's gone, the connection will free up. Um, but yeah, I was asking, do you guys feel confident in what you know about candlesticks? Because today the subject is patience, so that was my question.
I've still got a lot more learning to do with candlesticks, I can't lie. But I can just follow along.
I don't know nothing about candlesticks.
I'm here to learn. Okay, alright.
I, I am not confident as well.
Okay, so at least I know where, at least I know what kind of level I should be speaking at. Say that again?
I said I'm not confident about candlesticks. I don't know much about it.
No? Okay, that's fine. You're not confident. Okay, calm. Uh, I'm gonna start from the beginning. So let me just share my screen. Lovely, thank you. Okay, there are all of these, but they're not necessary. Anyone seeing this? Can anybody see this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, we can see it.
Yes, we can see.
Hello, hello, I just noticed it is not on the call. Give me two seconds.
Hello?
Yo, yo, you back here? Nice, nice.
Yeah. Yeah, we can see you.
Could you see my screen when I was trying to share it?
Yeah, we were seeing you, but then I think it's to do with the connection or something.
Okay, alright, okay, I'm sitting by the window and I'm in a
You're breaking.
You know, there's wifi, but, uh, am I breaking up again? Am I really?
Yeah.
Yeah, went a bit choppy, but I can't tell if that's because I go into a different room and it gets choppy for me.
Well, no, if anyone else is seeing it, you know what I mean, let me think. What do you, um, I can try to connect to the wifi again, now that my friend is on. I can try and connect to the wifi, but once I do that, it might boot me out of zooming back in. I hope it doesn't, or I could just keep running. How choppy is it? Is it really choppy, yeah? Yeah, alright, give me a second. Okay, give me a second, I'm gonna try now and connect. Um, bear with me. Am I still in the room and anybody here?
Yeah, you're still there, you're still there.
Oh lovely, okay, brilliant. I think that's the best I'm gonna get guys. I've connected to the wifi, um, and I am still here, right? So if it still goes
Much move on.
See that much movie, yeah? Brilliant, I'm so glad to hear that, thank you, thank goodness. Okay, let's get started then. Welcome, um, again to Sunday study sessions. Um, I asked earlier, I sort of, to sort of what, what everyone's level was when it comes to candlesticks and I've got a good answer there, so at least I know where I'm gonna begin. So I'm gonna start off by sharing my screen. Um, here we go. Start now.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, brilliant, thank you bro. Lovely. Okay, so here, we can see candlesticks, okay? So each candlestick gives us five pieces of information, five pieces of information, okay? First, if it's a white candlestick, then that means that price has gone up. If it's a black candlestick, that means that price has gone down, yeah? Um, so we can see here, price went up, then it went down, down, then it went up, then it went down, 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 then it went up, up, down, up, 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 up. Good day, yeah? So we can see price has had a really good day on that day, it's gone up, right? Ultimately, but each candlestick tells you the little break in that movement. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can see ultimately today has gone up, right? Ultimately, that's what's happened. It started off here, it went down here, then it went all the way up here, and then this is where it finished. Yeah, do that again. This is one day, right? And it started off here, then it went up a little bit, then it came all the way down here, then it went all the way up to the top here, and then this is where the day finished, right? We can see that that's what happened with the day, right? Now each candlestick individually tells us five pieces of information, right? The first piece of information is the direction that this particular session went in. So let's say we're looking at this big, big white candlestick here, right? Let's say we're looking at this one, okay? So we know this is a white candlestick, which means price went, which way guys? Up or down?
Up.
Up, excellent, excellent. So if it went up, then that means that it started at the bottom of the candlestick. That's where it started, yeah? And that's where it finished, because it went up, yeah? So it started at the bottom and it finished at the top, because it went up, right? So that's two additional bits of information. Where price started, look, 1.37430, and where price finished, 1.37820. We can see where price started and we can see where price finished. That's two pieces of information, do you agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, my bike just fell over. Someone, someone gave a really enthusiastic yes there, I love it. Um, okay, so we can see where price started and we can see where price finished and we can see which direction price went in during that session. Now, what is a session? Well, this is the hour chart, right? So when I say the hour chart, um, if you press this thing on your screen and you see all these symbols, right? Um, I couldn't do it after, okay? This one MN is month, uh, which means each candlestick represents one month. Then W1 next to it is week, which means each candlestick represents one week. Then D1, which is day, right, means each candlestick represents one day. Then H4, um, is hour, four hours. So each candlestick represents four hours and an H1, which is slightly darker, because that's the one that we're looking at right now. If you look at the top left of the screen, it says GBP USD H1. Everyone can see that?
Yeah.
On the top left, yeah? Cool. So that means that every single one of these candlesticks represents one hour. And as you can see, there were 24 hours in a day. So there were 24 candlesticks in, in between those dotted lines. Does that make sense to everyone? Yes, clean, easy, simple, yeah? Brilliant. Then we've got M30, which is 30 minutes. So every candlestick is 30 minutes, uh, 15 minutes, five minutes and one minute. Every candlestick is one minute, right? Um, so we're looking at candlesticks because today's, today's subject is patience. That's what we're focusing on, right? So we're gonna come back to that a little bit later, but we're talking about candlesticks for now, just so that you guys understand what we're talking about when, when, when we say you need to be patient with your journey. Um, okay, so, right, now you understand the timeframes. Um, what that means is, no, wrong one, there you go, that's what I'm looking for. So what that means is here, right, during this hour, during this one hour, price started at the bottom and it finished at the top, right? So how many pieces of information do we know about this candle so far guys? Anyone?
Three.
Three, fantastic, thank you. Okay, um, and each candlestick tells us five pieces of information. Okay, so we know which direction price has gone in. We know where price started during that hour-long session and we know where price finished during that hour-long session. What we also know is these wicks at the bottom and top of the candle, right? They tell us more information. What they tell us is how low price went during that session and how high price went during that session, okay? So for example, let's say we were making a new candlestick right here. Price starts here, that's where price started at 1.38415, right? Then it goes up, right, to 1.38275, right? But then it changes its mind and goes down, right? And it's now a black candle with a wick, just to say, I was here. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what a wick does, right? So if, if for example Oh, so if you could just move the lines please? Thank you, thanks guys. Um, so if for example, this price here were to go back up, okay? Let me undo all of that again. Uh, it would have a wick at the bottom now. If it were to go up here, there wouldn't still be a wick here, would there? Because now price has gone up, yeah? So it doesn't tell us everything that happened. It only tells us the five most important pieces. This is how low it went, this is how high it went, this is where it started and this is where it finished. And this is the direction that price went in, that's it, yeah? So it tells us that information about each session, right? So like I said, in this hour, in this hour, price started here, it went this low, it went this high and it finished here. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, clean, does that not make sense to anyone? Anyone got any questions about that so far? Now you look at that, yeah?
Good.
Fantastic. Okay, well, look at this, right? So remember I said to you that there's 24 candles in a day? Well, look, price started here, it went down this low, it went up this high and it finished here. So what do you think the candle for the day would look like? Which day was this? This was Friday. This was Friday. Well, sorry, not, um, this, in between this dotted line and this dotted line, this was Friday, yeah? So what do you think the candle looked like for Friday? Well, it probably would look something like this, because it started here and it finished here, right? And it's, so basically the candle went up, didn't it? Price started down here and it finished up here, so price has gone up, right? And also it's got a little wick at the bottom and a teeny little wick at the top. That's what I'd expect to see if I were looking for a candle for the day. Well, we can look, let's have a look. Stop animation. Let's take this, let's take this into real life. Come on, let's go. Let's have a look at the D1, where every single candle represents one day. Instead of the hour one, where every candle represents one hour, we're gonna look at the D1, where every candle represents one day. Boom. Okay, and look, look at Friday's candle. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah? Is everyone confident about candlesticks?
Yeah.
Yeah? Is anyone not confident in what, in candlesticks?
What you've explained, confident with what you've explained.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You got it, yeah? Fun, I'm glad to hear that, glad to hear that. What I will say is that I have only explained the absolute fundamentals, guys. Yeah, these are the basics that I'm sharing with you, okay? Each candlestick tells a story, do you know what I'm saying? And, um, they have different names, like you've got like, uh, uh, an engulfing candle and you've got a shooting star and you've got a hammer and you've got a doggy. Each candlestick tells you a story, is that when, if you know this happened yesterday, then you can be confident that you know that's what's gonna happen tomorrow, yeah? If you know that yesterday price shut up, then you feel like, okay, tomorrow price is likely to shoot up as well. If I see this candle, um, today, then I can expect that candle tomorrow, yeah? For example, right? But signals, signals don't come that easily. This is, this is one thing that I wanted to say. They come frequently, right? And another thing to bear in mind is obviously, you know, there are loads of currency pairs. So if you're looking for signals, if you're looking for signals, you can find it, right? But especially if you are just new to trading, right, like I am. Yeah, if you, if you, if you don't have a six-figure account, like I don't, right? Then, you know, you might wanna just focus on one currency pair, pick one and just focus on it and study it and be patient with it, do you know what I mean? Be patient with it. Look, here on the MN, right, this is what I wanted to show you. So here on the MN, um, um, each candlestick represents one month, okay? So what that means is January, February, March, April, May, June and look, July has just started, yeah? Is that right? July's just started? No, July's almost over, isn't it? Where are we? What year is it?
I just started.
Thank you. Do you know what, yeah? Since I've been studying astrology, I don't know what month it is. We're in cancer season, that's all I've got. Okay, so basically, yeah, you can see each candlestick represents one month, right? Does that make sense to everyone? Each candlestick represents one month. So, um, so if for example, you were studying this chart, you could be studying it and waiting for a move for a year if you were looking at the, the bigger picture. Obviously, I wouldn't recommend that you do that, you know, especially not with a small account. If you've got a large account, you know, then you can jump into, you can make an investment that's gonna take a year or two to play out, do you know what I mean? But I don't really think either of us, any of us, are interested massively in making investments that are gonna take a year or two to play out. Obviously, it's a good thing to do, don't get me wrong. You know, if you see an opportunity to jump in, then why not? Chucking 10p, that's what we're here to do, you know, and we are, we're here to invest, right? But at the same time, you know, we're, we're here to learn first, yeah? And if you're there waiting for a year or two to learn, you know, then you're not gonna be learning as quickly as you could be learning, yeah? So you wanna kinda just jump in and manage your risk and, you know, fail quickly. You know, get your fellows out the way, just jump in, study, don't be reckless, don't be reckless. Be patient, do you know what I mean? Understand that this market, it's like, uh, it's, it's, there's trillions of pounds in this market, yeah? Every single day, there are trillions of pounds going through this market. So there are mathematicians, there are extremely wealthy people, there are very intelligent people who are tapping into this market. Yeah, we have to respect it. It's, it's all well and good that we've got a platform that can help us to make money, but we must respect the market, otherwise the market will, it will take your money. You know, it'll make you, it'll turn you into a fool, honestly. You know, you absolutely have to respect the market. You know, it's not something you can just jump in casually, because if it works once, it might not work twice, yeah? It's really important that you manage your risk when you trade, manage your risk when you trade. Um, we do a risk management Sunday study session as well. So come through to every Sunday, come through to the Sunday study sessions, because we cover like a different subject. The risk management ones are probably the most important, in my opinion. Um, but at the same time, you know, they're all important. Today is patience.
What time?
And every Sunday, one o'clock, every Sunday at one o'clock, every single Sunday.
For the risk management?
Oh, I don't know when I'm gonna do that one next, because I've done it, I've done it maybe like a week or two ago. The recording should be out though, the recordings, uh, if you go to Justin, Justin's actually got a, um,
Yeah, I'll put it in the group right now, won't you?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, calm Justin. I was gonna plug the, the channel, you know what I'm saying?
YouTube, isn't it?
Come on.
Yeah, yeah, I love that, I love.
I was gonna plug the channel. There's like a YouTube channel, which is
YouTube, yeah.
Yeah, so you know, you can go back on what, there's many times as you want, they're all there. And obviously, the more you guys run it up and the more you, you know, share it with people, whatever, then the more views it will get, do you know what I mean? That's just how the algorithm works.
Where's the channel? What channel?
Where is the channel? Where is the channel, Justin?
Put it in the chat, Justin.
Probably know if it's supposed to sleep, yeah, come on.
Yeah, I'll just pay in, no pits, no sleep, I'm gonna, give me two seconds, I'm just sharing it now.
Yeah, go on, do your thing mum. But yes, you guys get the point, right? It's there and the, and the information is there. But it's also important that, you know, you come to future sessions, because obviously I am learning, I am developing, I am growing. As I said, you know, I'm not a six-figure trader, um, you know, I'm not a star, you know, I'm not a, um, you know, multimillionaire. I've got so much more development to do in this space, me, right? I have come here and my focus has been on beating up the videos in wow. Um, and that's why I've learned what I've learned, which is why I'm here sharing with you guys, because that was, that kindness was given to me. Someone, Carl, you know, came in and helped me to understand this. So me, I'm coming every Sunday to help you guys understand. But the way I'm explaining candlesticks today, I've never explained it like this in a previous Sunday study session, you know? So come through to as many of them as you can, the more of you guys that are here, you know, the more, um, energy I'll get. This is very give and take, do you know what I mean? The more energy I get, the more energy I'll give, um.
Yeah, um, can I say something, Nat? Um, somebody, uh, somebody posted your video, I think you did it in 2000, you know, it's a, it's an old video and it helped me so much because I was making money and money was disappearing because I was waiting and waiting. And then you talked about trade, trailing stop loss and take profit, push a profit? And that is when I, I made, I made, I made my first 200 pounds, so thank you so much. I just wanted to say that.
Wow, look at that, I didn't even know that, wow.
That's amazing, amazing.
That is so good to hear, that is so good to, I'm so proud of you, honestly, well done. Brilliant, 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 brilliant.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah mum. Okay guys, so, um, so patience, right? Patience, patience. This is the point of what I'm, of what I wanna say, right? So when a candlestick is being formed, it does like a little dance. It's really quite annoying actually. Um, let me go back with a bit more space, here we go. Um, when a candlestick is being formed, it does a little dance. Oh, where's it gone? Okay, it's gonna do me like that. Okay, okay. How do I get out of here? Oh no, I'm stuck in draw mode guys. Um, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we're here.
Hey lovely. So when a candle gets, when I'm stuck in draw mode, so I, I don't know how I'm gonna get out of it, I'm gonna figure out in a second. But it does a little dance, right? So this is where price starts and then it goes up and then it goes down, right? And leaves a wick and then it goes up and leaves a wick and then it goes down and leaves a wick and it goes up and leaves a wick and it's really annoying, because you know, if you, if you enter here thinking, yes, price is gonna go up and then it changes its mind and goes down, you know? Um, it is advised, it is advised that you wait until the candle has finished forming before you enter your trade. So let's say, look at this hair engulfing candle that I've just circled, right? If you're waiting for this white candle to be an engulfing candle, you have to wait until the hour is finished. So if it's 1:29, you wanna wait until 1:59. That is patience, do you understand? If it's 1:29, you wait until 1:59, yeah? And to see, is this actually an engulfing candle or not, right? Don't just jump in and say, okay, I think it's an engulfing candle. This candle will not be finished forming until the end of the hour, until the end of the session. And if this big white candle, right, at, um, at 1, at 1:55 drops and becomes, or, or comes all the way down here, then now, you know, price is probably gonna drop, do you know what I mean? Because all of that momentum is no longer there, it's all dropped, do you know what I'm saying? But if you're looking for this engulfing candle, now you end time, look, the next candle is up, right? But how do I get out of this? Let me try and figure this out. Oh gosh. That's even worse. Ah, I'm actually stuck. Uh, I don't know how to get out of this, let me, what about stop share? I'm proper stuck.
Yeah, stop sharing.
How do I stop sharing?
Go back to the Zoom.
How did this happen? Okay. Hello, where is, where is the actual
Okay, bye, bye.
This is, uh, this is, this guys is what Sunday This is, uh, this is, this, guys, is what Sunday study sessions is about. Look at this. Yeah, this is creativity. Wow, we get all the technicals today. Can you, um, um, Justin, can you make yourself host and boot me out of the meeting? Yeah, and I'll just jump back in real quick. And then obviously, I'll use the tool again.
Okay, Paul, when this is jump back in, it should be right.
What's a good currency pair to focus on then, if you knew?
Um, well, I I wouldn't even able to say, other than like GDP, J P Y, I find that one's all right to look at. Or like Euro U S D.
Okay.
Yeah, I was all over the place trying so many, and then I I have now settled on uh U S D, J P Y and Nasdaq. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise Nasdaq either when, when you're still using a little account.
Yeah, no, so.
Yeah. I'll go on Nasdaq. I'll go on Nasdaq, using the Titans now. I think I rely on them too much.
Because they are fast and they, you know, they go really quick and if you're
You need a larger, a larger account for the Nasdaq.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I trade, I just trade, trade using the um Titans.
Yeah.
I just, I just use from the Titans, I don't go in. I've already got burnt with Nasdaq.
Definitely takes some pounds. The money moves a lot faster with that.
Yeah. I I love Nasdaq.
Only fair benefits, to be honest. That's, that's my trading.
I got, I got burnt, but I'm still alive, so it's all right.
I got burnt as well. I'm still alive. I love Nas. But I got burnt.
You know, I think it has to do with all the indices family, the Nasdaq, the Nasdaq, F O C, almost all of them, you know? They, I'm told, yeah, now, if, if you are trading in Forex and um you have a lot size of about zero point zero one, and you are making one cent per pip, zero point zero one in indices will probably be giving you about eight cents or more.
Yeah.
The faster the, I mean, the smaller, the bigger the lot size, the bigger money you make, and your risk level also goes high.
So Yeah.
When it comes to indices, it can quickly burn your money if you are not careful.
Yeah.
So fast.
Yeah.
Okay, it's going to turn once. I think where I removed him, it's now blocked him, so I'm sorry.
It's okay, we're exercising patience. We're here.
Yeah, and we are talking about our, you know, the knowledge we have, really.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, I hope, I hope this week is really good. I I believe it's gonna be good after that N F P something.
Yeah.
I see. I see. For me, as a beginner, wh- what I decided to do was to actually focus on one thing. If you tried putting them together, at the end of the day, once trade ideas are being put on the platform and you don't have that patience to wait and stuff, you might end up putting the same trades together. And that will probably make you not concentrate, and a lot of stuff can go against you. So I don't know if it was Lisa that was asking about, um, um, the trade ideas that you can um concentrate on. I guess you're that now. I think it's better sometimes you stick to a particular, um, um, how do you call it? A currency pair.
Currency pair, yeah.
Yes, a particular currency pair that you study too much, you get to know about each movement, price action, then you follow. You are, I've been monitoring them, Dr Stevens, Brian Stevens, and it looks like he's, he's always doing the particular pair that he's comfortable with. I mean, he's not rushing it. He just waits for the right time to enter and then he comes out at the right time. So I think it was a good question. You have a nice currency pair you are following and the likelihood that you can win more with just one or two, I think is
Yeah.
You do too many things together.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get there, we will, we will.
A- absolutely, guys. It's key that you stick to one pair. The best thing to do, really and truly, is to have one account that you, where you can focus on just one pair, so you're not mixing up other trades with your one pair account. Have an open up another account, and then that count gives you to take all different signals from shift, so therefore you're not kind of confusing it with your main account, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And if you like to trade indices, then you have another account for indices, where obviously you've got a larger amount in there, and then you're not mixing the Forex pairs with the indices, because if you start, if you start mixing all different pairs with indices, for example, you're, all different kinds of emotions will happen, because Forex pairs is typically a lot slower, you might not have enough money to then hold, you might get margin pulled out. So separate your accounts, have different accounts for different things, if that makes sense. And USD J P Y is a really good pair to to get hold of. Um, number one, it's typically it moves in two patterns. It's a W pattern and an M pattern. So if you want to understand what W and W and M patterns are, just just type up in Google anywhere, like, look it up.
Yeah.
It's a particular pattern, um, which represents breakouts in the market. The market goes up, the market comes back down and moves into a nice simple pattern. So if you backtest USD J P Y, you will see a similar pattern in which you can then get to grips with and understand when to get in the market, when to get out the market. Dr Brian Stevens, that's his favorite pair, success leaves clues. Probably want to stick to USD J P Y if you want, if you want help on that as well. G B P U S D, for those of us that live in London, England, shall I say, is a really good pair as well, because it's a pair that you could analyze first thing in the morning, and it's got heavy volatility, because it's the London session mixed in with the New York session, which is the two biggest markets in the world. So if you want to catch a lot of pips, USD JP, USD J P Y, so USD, uh, G B P U S D, sorry, is a really good pair. So it's a master. There you go.
Okay, thank you. On this note, I would like a question, please.
Sorry.
I would want to ask a question, please.
Hmm.
So let's say, let's say, um, you have a London session opening between, let's say, eight thirty in the morning to two thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And you have, um, the New York session coming in two thirty to like, let's say, eight, eight P M or probably nine P M in the evening. If you have a pair like G B P U S D.
Yeah.
And it's likely that it's going to do some better movement after the London section is closed. It is clear I'm able to go in. You know, sometimes I have that kind of timeframe. That's a problem, that, okay.
Yeah, you could definitely still go in. There's, there's two sides you can catch the money. So let's say, for example, G B P U S D. Let's say, for example, that during the morning, uh, the London session, the G B P is the stronger currency, and it's buying, it's going up. All that basically means is when the New York session happens, or a switch over happens, the New York will be the stronger currency, and therefore, um, you know, it'll be, the market will be selling instead of buying. It always does the opposite to whatever happens in the morning.
Okay.
So now you can catch that maybe a fifty pip move in the morning, and then you can also go in on the opposite direction and catch your fifty pips on the way down. Or vice versa.
Okay, I see. So it means that, um, if, if, if London opens in the morning and G B P U S D does a bullish.
Yep.
In the afternoon, it's likely for it to be a bearish.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I get you.
That's right, yeah. But this is what, um, we talk about. So when we talk about anything that you hear or anything that you see, it's always important that you backtest it as well. So don't just take my word for it, what you
Yeah, I get you, yeah.
Go onto G B P U S D, you'll pull up the charts and you'll look at the history, you'll look at what happens in the mornings, and does it do something different in the afternoons? And and then you'll just clock the time. So, yeah, and that's it, that's it. And then you'll see a a a pattern. And, uh, you know, once you've done something for thirty days, if you just stuck to one pair for thirty days, just imagine literally one pair of thirty days, seven days a week, you spent, you know, a couple of hours analyzing that pair. Towards the end of the month, you will feel like you know a little bit more about that pair. Imagine what would happen if you did that for six months to a year, just one pair. The following year, you would be an absolute master at that pair, you would know it inside out, and therefore you would know every move that it makes, which would then mean that you could catch the majority of the money that it makes. So it's soft slow at the beginning, but by the end of it, you'll be laughing, because you'll be doing it on a daily basis at will when you want, how you
Yeah.
Yeah, and as, as, uh, something, as, as a new, you know, somebody who is new, really, I think it's very important to to learn, well, in my, in my example, I joined in April and I was going in wow every single day, and I was still finding it difficult. But I remember the first session that, uh, I attended, uh, Carl had a training and he talked about pips, and you really, really broke it down into the way that I connected it with the wow teachings and I understood it properly.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, and it helped me really so much. So I think I learned better from you guys than, you know, wow is great, but I learned, when you say something that is in wow, it's like re- reinforcing it into my brain. So that's how, uh, yeah, I started with a two hundred, two hundred fifty account, but now I have one thousand two hundred in my account, so.
Good girl.
Amazing, amazing. That's a great level.
Yeah, and I only started in April the fifteenth, that's when I joined, so I think yeah, learning, I I learn a lot from you guys, whatever word you say, I I might pick one or two, but it works for me. So any new person, I would encourage them to make sure they join one of your teachings or as many as they can.
Okay, um, Nate's not able to jump back in.
Yeah.
He's got removed, so we'll have to wrap this one up and start again for next week. I'll send out the recording for the beginning part of it, and yeah, hopefully it's nice and smooth for next time. But appreciate everyone for jumping onto the call. Remember, we've got the five o'clock meeting, Sunday Mastermind, and then the seven o'clock one with Jose or Don as well, so obviously everyone plug in. You will see it all there.
Lovely.
Thank you, Justin.
I value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Bye.